All right, there we go. I think we're recording. All right, I'm going to share my screen and put together a little presentation that I hope will walk us through.
We have, I think, those things that...
Still hearing background noise.
It's so loud.
Can you please mute yourselves?
I'm muted, people.
Is it cold?
Huh?
All right. So the first thing I want to say is the whole goal of this, this idea came up from the WFT. They requested a town hall. And then we opened it up to all the staff members. I hope to spend some time right now celebrating the fact that we've finally come to the end of the 2019-2020 school year. And okay, I think we should clap and dance and do all sorts of stuff because it was touch and go there for a while. I, we're going to express our gratitude for all your hard work. I'm going to share the end of the survey results, the end of the year survey results for what I have so far. And then talk to you a little bit about next steps. I'm going to just let you know upfront, I don't have all the answers. In fact, there's a lot of answers I wish I had that I'm going to just tell you outright, I don't have them. Because we're waiting for guidance from the state. So we're just going to have to be patient in that regard. Oh, I hear something. Some background noise there. Just some reminders to try to get through this virtual town meeting. I need everyone on mute. I know I keep saying it, but it really is helpful to ensure that people can hear one another and that you can hear me. I want everyone to be patient because I've never done a Zoom meeting this large. And actually, we had to update our membership just to be able to have all the staff members potentially log on at once. I'm asking you to use the chat room. And also to remind you that in the staff survey, there's an opportunity for you to ask questions and voice concerns. So either in that survey or in the chat room, please do that. I don't know if I'm going to be able to answer all of them. Actually, I know I'm not going to be able to answer all of them. But what I don't answer now, we're capturing for later so we can come back to it. And please remember during this whole big town hall, we are all on the same team. All right, the very first thing I want to make sure I do is to say thank you to every single one of you from the bottom of my heart. This was the strangest school year in the history of school years. We will not forget it anytime soon. And I want to thank you for all that you've done for the students of Wyndham Public Schools. So take a minute, give yourselves a round of applause. Give yourselves a pat on the back. Give yourselves a hug. Do something that says you understand how much I appreciate you because we really do appreciate you. I see some people celebrating there. I'm getting all sorts of pop-ups again. Janet, you'll be able to see my pop-up issue. So thank you very much. Every single one of you has done something to contribute to us being able to get through what has been complete craziness. As of right now, and I still hear some background noise, so someone, at least one someone is not muted. As of right now, as of 11 o'clock this morning, I had 284 people had responded to this survey. 206 of those people were sort of wiped out. I'm sorry, it's hard to hear over that background noise. Trying to figure out who it might be so I can help.
Tr- uh, Ms. Youngberg, if you, or Dr. Youngberg, if you, you as the host should be able to mute everyone in the call.
Yeah, I have Janet out in the other office working on it.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, I'm in now using yours.
Well, you need to mute yourself.
All right, so as of 11 o'clock this morning, we had 284 people respond to the survey. You can see the breakdown of where the participants or the respondents came from. Obviously, I want to encourage all of you, if you haven't taken the survey, to please do so. The more people who respond to the survey, the more likely that the data we're getting is accurate, right? But I'm going to share what we have so far. And hopefully, people will take me up on my offer and respond if they haven't already. So in terms of the question, and this is how the question was worded, give me one sec. The question was worded as follows in terms of meeting overall student needs. Since the first day of our school closure, which was March 16th, the district has undergone significant changes to address the needs of our students nutritionally, academically, and emotionally. Please rate the district's overall response to addressing students' needs. And we had five categories or five stars: poor, fair, good, very good, and excellent. Obviously, each one being a numerical, a number on the star chart there. We end up, we ended up so far with a 4.06 with the 284 people who have responded. So I'll be interested in seeing if that plays out, if we land in the very good range. Or very good to excellent range should the remainder of the staff respond to the survey. So I am interested in understanding how well you think we did. So please give us the data we need. Next question was the worded as follows. Since the first day of our school closure, March 16th, the district and school-based leadership team has worked to keep Wyndham Public Schools employees informed of the ever-changing nature of the pandemic and its impact on the organization through email, video messages, and phone calls. Please rate our communication with WPS staff. And so far, we have a 4.41 rating on the survey. Next question has to do with schooling at home and the overall effectiveness. If you were involved in providing Wyndham students schooling at home or virtual learning, please rate the effectiveness of our overall process. We scored a 3.29. And I, the district is very much aware that we have a lot of work to do. We applaud the work that our staff members did under very strange circumstances with a technology budget that has been slashed year over year. I think we did pretty good understanding the circumstances, but I know we have a long way to go to get this right and to get it to a place where it's equivalent to what other students have access to. So 3.29 seems fair to me, but I'd be interested in getting the full scope of the, of where we are once other people reply to the survey. The next question dealt with the WFEP who were provided with virtual PD during the school closure. And they were asked the question, "I found the virtual professional development the district required me to complete to be focused on what I need to better support Wyndham students." And they were given the choice of strongly disagree, disagree, neither, agree, or strongly agree. And of the 54 respondents who answered by 11 o'clock this morning, you can see where they broke down their choices or where they chose to rate that question. Looks like we have a little bit of work to do. Probably about 60% of the 54 agreed or strongly agreed. Obviously, anytime someone tells you that PD was not relevant to them, I know from a teaching and learning standpoint, we have work to do. So we absolutely have work to do on this one. Okay, so the next section of the survey dealt with the questions and concerns that you all had. There were 179 questions or concerns that were posted. They really fell into categories or themes, as you can see on your screen. A lot of questions were focused on logistics. Many people do not understand how we're supposed to make it work in August. And I totally understand why they're asking the questions. And the questions were about their individual roles, roles in the, you know, how the classroom's supposed to work, how their department is supposed to work, or their school in general. So we're going to try to get as many answers for you as possible, but it's hard to do that until we know what the guidelines are from the state. For example, one of the summer school guidelines says that there can be no more than 10 bodies in a classroom at any given time. So I don't know whether the summer schools guidelines are going to also be our falls, our fall guidelines. We're not sure of that yet. But if that were the guidelines, obviously, that creates a whole series of things that have to be worked out about how we can only have 10 bodies in a classroom at a time. So I, we are going to get you as much logistical information as we can. Once we understand the problem we're actually trying to solve, and we don't yet. A lot of questions were posed about how you mandate or enforce the use of masks and social distancing, particularly for the littlest kids. Totally agree with you. Human beings sort of are designed to be near each other. It's just how we work. So I don't understand how that works either, or how you can get a kid to wear a mask. I'm also not certain that that's going to be a mandate from the state just yet. So more to come on that. There were a lot of questions about health and safety, how you ensure it, not just for students, but also for staff members. There were some questions about virtual learning and some questions about basic communication. So lots more to come on that. And we'll talk a little bit more about what we're waiting on from the staff as we move through the brief presentation I have today. One of the other things I want to mention about the survey is each of the questions provided an opportunity for you to tell us how you thought these things could be improved. So how you thought we could improve addressing student needs, how you thought we could improve communication with staff, how you thought we could improve virtual learning, and how we could improve the PD that we gave to our WFEP members. So I really am strongly encouraging you to please give us specific feedback. We're pretty good at taking feedback and running with it. So if you tell us how you think it should work, if it's bigger vision, we're going to run with it. So strongly encourage you to put down what you think will help us to improve practice. All right, so I think this visual says it all. We are, we are really moving along. In 2021, I want everyone to know that first and foremost, the number one thing on our list of priorities is the response to COVID-19. So we have to make sure the school system is ready to respond to COVID-19 in terms of student and staff, social emotional well-being, in terms of their physical well-being, in terms of the academics, that we know many of our kids lost a great deal of ground over the last 12 weeks or so. And we know we obviously have to meet the mandates of what the physical environment has to be in terms of cleanliness and disinfecting and all that. So the response to COVID-19 is going to be our biggest obstacle in 2021, followed closely behind by this, by an idea that we really have to get the district back on track so that there's some financial stability. And so we're not going each year to the Board of Finance and being in a position like we are this year where there's people who are going to lose jobs and we're not able to fund programs. And we need to get back to a place of sustainability. So we're working on that. And unfortunately, some of the decisions I'm going to make, you're not going to like them, but I can assure you that every decision I'm making is looking at the district's well-being and not just, you know, little pieces. And of course, all the little pieces are part of the big, of the whole. But I just want you to know that I'm thinking very strategically and very carefully about how to get the district back on track. So we're not forced to make the kinds of decisions that we're making right now. We're, I'm going to focus, or my leadership team and I are going to focus on trying to improve the staff engagement and provide some empowerment. I definitely have a different philosophy than has been in place in the last few years. So you're going to see some changes there. At the same time, there's going to be a focus on improving supervision. I think they all go together. I want to celebrate the people who are doing the right thing and helping us get the job done. And I, and I want to make sure that if there are people who aren't doing the right thing, that we're taking care of that as well. Because as leaders, the things you recognize and the things you don't recognize, they power. So we're going to take care of those things together. There's going to be a really strong emphasis on tier one. All the research says that if you focus on tier one, you're going to, you're going to get to more kids. You're going to impact more kids than if you don't. So we're going to work on that. Janet's here for technical support. Standby.
Hello?
All right, sorry about that. Little technical support backup here. As I was saying, we're going to, we're going to be emphasizing tier one. All the research suggests that if you focus on tier one, you're going to impact more kids than if you focus on any of the smaller things happening around, or tiers two and three, or any of your specialized programs. Obviously, we're not giving up specialized programs. I want to make that clear. I just, we need to make sure that some of the things that our students who are in specialized programs need, that they're actually still being, they're available to them in tier one. So we're going to make some minor changes that I think is going to have a pretty drastic impact. So I also will be working with the leadership team. We're actually going to show them some examples on Friday, which is our, our end of the year meeting with our leaders of how to take goals and roll them out over three to five years. So showing them how to, how to ensure that when we're implementing a particular program or a process, that we know what it might look like three to five years out. Not to say that we're going to be able to anticipate all the things that could potentially happen in that three to five-year time span, but to know that that's how we're thinking, that we need to put things in place that we understand what our goals are moving forward. And one of the things that's always been important to me and will continue to be important to me is the whole idea that we function as a team. And we'll be talking a little bit more about mutual commitments and how we can really, I guess, get a more bang for your buck, so to speak, by making sure we're working together. All right, I want to make sure everyone understands that there's a whole bunch of things happening behind the scenes. Since the beginning of the school closures, I've been involved in a weekly call with the Department of Public Health and a weekly call with the Governor and the Commissioner of Education. There's actually one tonight at 5 o'clock, although I think I'm going to be out front for the first wave of the drive-through diploma pickup for Wyndham High School's graduates. I've also been, not on a weekly basis, but certainly frequently in communication with the town's emergency team, emergency response team. So we are, the school system is kept up to date. If it feels like there's not been a lot of information shared lately, it's because there hasn't been a lot of information to share. They really haven't given us anything new. The last thing they released to us was the reopening of the guidelines for reopening summer school. We haven't really gotten anything new beyond that. So it is true, there's sort of been a void of information, but there's really nothing to report to you. We have a district reopening committee. It's, it has four teams on it. Four focus areas, a social emotional learning and supports is one, and that's, that team's led by Miguel Pabon. Physical well-being is led by Tara Webb. Academics is led by Neil Weathers. And the physical environment piece is led by Dawn Tamakis. So we are working on making sure that everything we do has these four components covered, because remember, the first thing we have to focus on for 2021 is response to COVID-19. This team is currently involved in PD with the Center for School Change. And that PD is really focused around how you set up, how you think deeply about a problem and how you set up solutions to the problem. They're not actually giving us any information about how to solve the problems because they themselves have told us that we can, we can understand how to better structure the problem, but we can't. Okay? Okay. Sorry, Janet's telling me I'm coming across garbled, so I'll see if this gets any better. So once again, the PD for the Center for School Change is really about thinking deeply about the problems and how you might set up structures to solve those problems. It is actually giving us answers about how to do the work. As with any other summer, we have important dates to remember. So I put them up on the screen, and I will send this presentation to each of your principals so that they have it to share with you. As of right now, and you'll notice it says subject to change based on the Governor's orders. Right now, we have a virtual summer school. That's not going to change. It is taking place between July 6th and July 30th. And it's for our K-3 students, our ESY students, credit recovery at the high school. And then there are a couple of special situations at Wyndham Middle School where they may have some summer work to complete. Right now, we have August 11th through the 13th is our Leadership Institute. I've told the principals, I'm not sure I'll use all three days, but I want you to save them on your calendar. We have two days set aside for new teacher orientation. We have convocation scheduled for August 21st, which I hope we'll be able to have in person. We have PD days, and you know, this is the approved border bed calendar for the August 24th and 25th. And the first day of school for students is August 26th. Right now, I can tell you that even though the state of Connecticut hasn't put out its guidelines for 2021, the state of Rhode Island and the state of Massachusetts, two of our three borders, right, have put out guidelines for 2021. And they are hybrid guidelines. They're, I think it's on the next slide. We talked about it. Those guidelines for 2021 for Massachusetts and Rhode Island and even Maryland have a combination of in-person learning and virtual learning. So once Connecticut decides to put out the next level guidelines, we'll be able to determine how they see us opening, but given the borders have put forth plans as they have, I suspect that Connecticut will follow suit, but I don't have any definitive way of answering that yet. One thing that the, that the RESC, that EastCon is hoping to help all of the local school systems with is a way to prioritize standards so that we can address the academic gaps in a very quick or expedient fashion. So they have, at least for K-8 so far, and it's possible that we could replicate the same kind of practice with the ninth through 12th graders. They've set up some workshops that your principals will talk a little bit about for my K-8 staff members, July 20th through the 24th for K-2 and 3 to 5, and July 27th through the 31st for grade six through eight. We are looking for members who are regular education teachers, special education teachers, and any member from ESOL and bilingual teams. We really want representation for all of our students in this, in these prioritizing standards PDs. Basically, they're going to give us a roadmap that we could use that tells us what's the most important things to teach so that we can help our students close some gaps academically when they, when they get back. All right, I'm going to close, unshare my screen here so I can potentially answer some questions. I'm going to try anyway. Can everybody hear me? Shake your head, bobble head. Okay, I see this and that. It's weird. We've never had an issue with the, with the sound before. I wonder if it's because there's so many people on the, huh? Keep saying. Let me see if I can do this from Janet's.
There you go.
Is it on now?
Yeah, that's better.
What happened?
I, I played with it on my end.
So you can hear me when I'm in here now?
Yep.
All right.
I can hear you better now, Tracy.
Sorry about that, everyone.
It sounds better.
And the crackling sound is gone.
Yes.
Huh, interesting. All right, let's see if we have any questions that you need me to answer. I'm going to have to scroll back here. Oh, okay. First, I saw Leaky say that pre-K would like to participate in the prioritization, it's a tough word, of standards. So Leaky, EastCon isn't offering pre-K, but the process can definitely be applied to pre-K, just like I think it can be applied to the high school. I can check with Diane Dugas at EastCon to see if they have been thinking about pre-K, but it did not get mentioned to me in my meetings. All right, I'm looking for questions in the chat thing here. So the answer to the question, will you get a copy of the presentation? Absolutely. I'm going to send it to the principals right after this. Okay, good question. Are the surveys going out to parents? Surveys are going out to parents. I hope to have them ready to go, as I said in my last phone call, by June 19th. So parents are going to have a chance to weigh in on the things that they can offer to help us get better at what we're doing. I love it where all the whippets at. Yeah. That's a question I can't answer. They're all over the screen. All right. All right, I see a question. I know many districts are prioritizing getting K-5 back full-time. So that's actually not confirmed. The, they have talked about potentially bringing the elementary schools back more often than the other schools. Can you still hear me? Because I just got that screen again that says your speaker is not working. Huh?
Oh, we're good.
We can hear you.
Interesting. Okay, keep me posted, Janet. They have mentioned that the elementary schools would be in more, would have more in-person time than high school and middle school students, but they haven't actually confirmed that that's a definitive yet. So there are some school systems that have decided to do their planning without the guidelines. So they may end up having to do the work twice, which is why I'm, I mean, we're thinking about scenarios for sure, but we haven't made any definitive answers. And that is not an answer we get. Well, we may, we may be able to get to make the decision. It really depends on how they set up the guidelines. I can tell you that the superintendent's organization, CAPS, has been trying to let the Governor and the Commissioner of Education know that they need to establish the guidelines in a way that gives school systems some flexibility because we're all so very different. And if you say we must do X, Y, and Z, you're going to end up with people that absolutely can't do X, Y, and Z. So from a, from a, I guess, from an economic, economical standpoint, bringing the little ones in makes sense because you can get the big people at home back to work. And because you'd think that middle school and high school kids would be more likely to benefit from, or to be able to benefit from a virtual learning environment versus the little, the little guys. But again, that's all still up in the air.
Dr. Youngberg?
Yes.
We have a question. Will the standards be prioritized for science as well?
So they're, they have, right now, EastCon has a literacy and a numeracy PD set up, but we already talked about the fact that we have to apply the same process to science.
Next question.
Oh, I like this, Janet. You go.
Some of us have not, still not received salary agreements.
So I think that you probably have received salary agreements. Well, it's possible that the format that they were delivered this year has created another layer. So what, if you could send me an e, an email, I will get you your salary agreement. They're being delivered digitally this year, which is the first time that's ever happened. And if you didn't log on and create your profile, you haven't seen your salary agreement. So send me an email and we'll get, we'll get it to you.
From Ms. Greer, what procedure for joining the committee?
Okay, so each of the, there's the four committees that are going on at the district level, but each of the school principals is involved in those committees. So they will be basically taking that information back to their buildings. So I would say if you have an interest in making sure something's happening in your building, I'm assuming, you said it was Ms. Greer, right? So she's in a building. She should contact her principal.
Referring to that work in July, the work in July.
Oh, same thing. I'm sorry, same thing. Contact Liz.
Will the SEL reopening committee be meeting over the summer?
That's a good question. It's certainly okay with me if they meet over the summer, and I know that we have money to potentially provide stipends. So if the, if the building, if the committee leader wanted to make that a summer thing, I would say they could, they could go ahead and do that. I know that if we get guidelines from the state, I'm going to be calling meetings and communicating with a lot of people. Since I have no idea when that information's going to be released, more than likely, there'll be some kind of communication in the summer.
From Ms. McCusick, what is the plan for math?
In terms of, I need more. Jan, can you?
I think I know the question and the answer.
Oh, go, Neil.
All right, so we were looking at a new K-8 math program in the district. We had a committee meet once and had three presentations. But what we're doing next year is we're keeping in all, all through K through eight, the current program and reordering consumables. And the reason for that decision was the committee never made a decision. I don't feel the committee was in consensus on a decision. And I don't feel, based on some of the things that are being answered right now, that we're in any place to have district-wide PD for a brand-new math program. Not to mention, the cost of it would impact the staffing decisions we're making. So that's why we're holding for one year so we can make a more informed decision for the following year when we're actually in. So I have a lot of samples and some of your other resources. So, so I hope that answers the question. I think that is the question.
From Joe Hayward, if people are getting bumped, were they already informed? If not, when will we find out who is being bumped?
Neil, you want to answer that? Because I know you're working on with Stephanie. I know she, Stephanie, I don't know if she's on this call because she's working on another piece.
So, yeah, no, Stephanie's working on stuff right now. So in the, it's a slightly complicated, but depending on the bargaining unit, we're going to be communicating in the next couple of days. There's some communication going on between, you know, HR and the bargaining units. But generally, the idea is in the very near future, the teachers that are displaced or laid off will be getting information to meet with representation from their bargaining unit, and then we'll be having conversations. And there's a, a procedure in place, but we haven't even shared all the details of that, even with all the members of building leaders. So I'm going to keep that answer as that right now, but you should be hearing something very soon. And I'm sorry that's not specific. There's details that happen every second that change a lot of the procedures. And I think Dr. Youngberg can attest to that. And we want to make sure we do this correctly. And, and we know, we understand, believe me, the stress and anxiety you're having awaiting. But I'm hoping in the next 24 to 48 hours, everyone on the unit will have some sort of communication setting up some meeting or other, or at least letting you know where we are in the progress with your bargaining unit.
Thank you, Neil. I think you covered that pretty well.
From Kristen Benini, any ways for non-certified staff to help?
To help with? Chris, can she give me more information?
Ms. Benini, can you unmute yourself and give us more information?
Hi. Yeah, sorry, I typed it like 10 minutes ago now. There's so many questions popping up. Just anything we can be doing over the summer. It seems like all the opportunities right now are for certified staff, but just keep in mind, if there's anything that we can be doing, please let us know.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
From Ms. Brenna, how often will the priority committee meet?
Don't know if we can answer that yet. EastCon hasn't given us specific details. They've only told us the weeks that they blocked off. As soon as I hear from them as to how long within that week or how often they meet, I will get that information out. Basically, what I told the principals was that they should look for people, staff members who are available for that whole week, and I know sometimes that's hard to say, who are comfortable, turnkeying information to their colleagues and available during the weeks that are indicated. If we go, if we look that, you know, for people who meet those two criteria, and we think about the regular education, special education, and ESOL and bilingual teachers, we should cover all our bases.
Ms. Westerman, I believe that your question was answered about being switched, positions being switched and cut. And Ms. Campanelli, same thing. I believe that is the same, same question. Sorry, going down.
There's a lot of questions. I don't be sorry, Janet. There's a lot going on in this little chat box.
Ms. Lewis, is the prioritizing PD for reading and math maps for the district?
So it's actually, as I understand it, because I haven't actually seen the PD, but as I understand it, it's supposed to be working, a team of teachers, Wyndham being part of that team, are going to be working on prioritizing part of that team, are gonna be working on prioritizing standards, making strategic decisions about which standards can be focused on to get us our biggest bang for our buck in the shortest amount of time. It's not specific to our maps, we would then have to take that information, or that process, and apply it to, not just our maps, but whatever our curriculum is that we're gonna be using in 2021. So, it's really the planning, the beginning piece to planning, how we can shorten up what we cover, because we know we have to make up a lot of time.
From Ms. Brunner, are we keeping Think Central online?
I see Neil jumping in, you're on mute, Neil.
Struggling with my cursor there, okay. So, I believe the answer's yes, but I will have more information soon, I'm checking with what our reorder includes, I think it does include that. And also, some of you actually asked the question, so I'll jump to it, because it's related. If you don't need consumables, because, we're gonna do a little bit of an inventorying next week to make sure we order the right number and we're not wasting money, because there's some grade levels and classes that do not need reorders. So, we will reach out to the schools and try to get an accurate reorder, so we're not being wasteful. But thank you, I'm glad that teachers were asking that, and I know principals have been asking that, and I appreciate that mindset.
And it'll be really important that we do that, Neil. In the past, we have, there have been definitely some mistakes made with the orders on consumables, but it hasn't helped, it hasn't impacted us financially, because we pay, you pay, the contract covered you for consumables for however many years the contract was written for. So, we weren't charged any additional monies, but we will be charged additional monies this year, because we're outside of the contract now. So, it's really important we get a clear number of needs.
So, I'm assuming that that also answers Anne Marie's question, and Ms. Sharp's question, and Shields. Next question is from Ms. Goodwin, asking about Spanish material for new classes?
Yes, we're, all things included, we'll inventory everything. But yes, all Anne Marie, Ms. Shields, Ms. Sharp, affectionately known as C-Sharp, by the way, and Ms. Goodwin, all those questions, we'll be inventorying all of those things.
Okay, from Ms. Leahy, will we be able to request materials after we find out what we are doing in the fall? I'm unsure what I will need, because I am not sure what the new year will look like.
That's a really good question. I think we're gonna try to figure out how to get us whatever we need, based on what next year looks like, but you're right, there's a lot of unknowns, so you wouldn't be able to plan at this point. It would all just be guessing at this point, as to what the fall looks like. So, yeah, we're gonna do our best to make sure teachers have what they need. Remember, we learned a lot of lessons from this crazy school closure. I clearly can tell you, I had no idea we were gonna end up closed for the entire school year, when we went home on March 13th. I just, even though I knew that it had happened in other places, it just didn't dawn on me that it would be happening here, I don't know why. I can tell you, though, I didn't believe it was going to be along, at least not through the end of the school year. So, but we've learned a lot of lessons, so we have to be really smart about taking those lessons and applying them, and make sure we don't make the same mistakes. So, yeah, we're gonna try to get you whatever you need, within, obviously, within reason, because we don't have a, you know, our budget's tight.
Next question, will we get access to the previous year's materials, as our students miss so many skills that will need to be taught before we can do grade-level materials?
So, that is part of what the prioritization for K-8 standards is all about. It's about not necessarily going backwards, but figuring out how to close that gap in a strategic way. So, that's part of that work. So, once we go through that PD, and we make the transfer over to our side, we'll be thinking about that. One of the pieces of PD, one of the lessons that we learned, and that the reopening committee went to with the Center for Secondary, no, I'm sorry, Center for School Change, confuse all the outside providers, they said that you really can't think about this problem from a deficit standpoint. You have to think about it in a positive way, and think about how we can accelerate learning, and not how we have to go backwards. So, we're gonna work on that as a district, but the prioritizing standards is a big piece of that.
From Ms. Torres, I know there is no bilingual opportunity for summer school, but I'm kind of worried about parent communication that needs support in Spanish. She's offering to help, any?
Well, we always say thank you for anyone who's offering to help. I guess I need more information about, which parents are we talking about? There's a specific group of people you know need support?
Hi, no, I'm just worried about a lot of our students that are recommended for summer school, that because of the, precisely the things that we have been struggling with them, need a lot of support in Spanish, because maybe their kids need it, and the parents need it also. So, that was my concern about it, so.
Okay, so, obviously, we're taking your feedback very seriously, so we'll discuss that with the department to see how we might be able to support them. I know that the summer school issue, we offered, we're offering virtual summer school, because we couldn't afford to meet the guidelines definition for transportation. They want, they only wanted one student per seat on a school bus, every other seat, unless they were related, and they required a bus monitor in every bus. So, it was cost prohibitive, we could not have offered the program. So, we are only offering the ones we're mandated to provide. So, it is unfortunate, so, we'll definitely, I hear you loud and clear, and we'll see what we can do.
From Mr. Booth, is it possible for the district to purchase full versions of Screencastify for teachers from Google? Tutorial videos created with this program were a valuable tool in distance learning, and the free version limits videos to only five-minute recordings.
So, that sounds like a Mr. O'Neill question.
That is definitely something we can look into. I believe that was in that wish list budget I had given you at one point.
We have a lot of wish list budgets over here, Brendan.
I have a lot of wish list budgets. I do believe that is one of the things identified as likely being a useful tool, especially if we're going into a hybrid learning this fall. But definitely, we'll keep that on the radar.
Brendan, any idea like cost ballpark?
I wanna say it was like six or seven grand a year for the whole district.
Oh, that's nothing compared to some of the other bills.
Exactly, it's a relatively small expense compared to some of the others. So, I would say that's likely, but I'm not promising anything.
All right, thank you very much.
Guys, can I chime in? OBS Studio is free for PC and Mac for anyone trying to make YouTube videos. So, that's some software that can be used as well.
What is it called?
OBS Studio.
You'll find it in the comment section, in the chat section. Thank you, Mr. Unker.
And, yeah, Mr. Unker's the star of many videos, so he knows this on a personal basis.
Thank you.
Laura, in the event of hybrid or online learning, will pre-K students be eligible to use Chromebooks if they do not have devices at home?
So, one of the things that we're really trying to work on is to make sure that every household has access, has digital access. So, it may not be a device for every kid in the household, but every household has some kind of device, and so if they don't have one on their own, the school system's gonna try to get them one. And then, some kind of access, some way to get them access to the internet, whether that be a jetpack, or, Brendan understands this stuff way better than I do. But our goal is to get every household and Wyndham Public Schools access, so we have the ability for everyone to go to online learning, should that happen. We also are gonna be working to understand, given what we've learned so far, that we may be put in a situation where there's a second wave, and we have to shut down very quickly. So, we're gonna know how to do that, and do that well, and not have to do all the things we did this year. So, we're gonna, we're working on figuring all those pieces out.
Okay, from Joe Hayward, if we return at the beginning of the year, how will we decide where we start, since students will not be at the level expected as other years?
So, we're definitely gonna have, like every other year, some kind of baseline gathering, we're gonna do some kind of assessments, not gonna be heavy on assessments, but we're gonna do some kind of assessments to get an understanding of where kids are. I don't want people to worry about where they are, they are where they are, where they are, the adults are gonna have to figure out where we go from here. So, again, that gets back at the prioritized standards, understanding where the kids are really coming in, and then figuring out how we're gonna move forward. Of all the pieces that we have to focus on, I feel like we have the best handle on that, this district has done so much work on understanding, you know, understanding how to develop standards and implement standards. I feel like that's the least of our worries, although it may be causing anxiety amongst all of you, I feel like we have a really good handle on how to address that. But this, the next year will be no different than any other year, we're gonna gather baseline data on the kiddos. And not just in academics, we're gonna do it in terms of their social, emotional well-being as well.
There are more answers and solutions for the video problems, so those I'll pass on to Mr. O'Neill, so he can look at them. And we also have some people requesting training, and I'll pass that on to Mr. O'Neill.
And this is all being recorded, so we'll get to capture all these for later, for me to go back through them.
Okay, Jara, I get so nervous hearing accelerated learning ending up looking like a deficit-based strategy, even though the fall seems far away. Will some PD for all district be about social and emotional support, trauma, and ways to continue some of the fun, hands-on activities that some kids have really thrived doing over the last 12 weeks?
Absolutely, so, of course, I can't tell you that I have all the answers, because I don't. But I do know that the professional development days that are set up for the beginning of the school year are gonna be focused on things we need to actually get through the first few weeks of the school year, and that we're going to have a real conscious effort on establishing, on, first of all, reconnecting with kids, because I think that's the most important piece of all of this. We're not gonna, even though we're gonna go to that PD for Eastcon about prioritizing standards, the academic standards are not gonna be what we're doing the first couple of weeks of school, for sure, I can promise you that. We are gonna reconnect with kids and make sure everybody's okay before we start slamming them with academics. That is not the first thing that we need to worry about after all this, but it's obviously our jobs, because we're a school system. But I do know that the beginning of the school year might look very different than other school years, and not because of COVID, not just because of COVID-19, because certainly that is playing a huge role, but because I think philosophically, I have a different view of what the beginning of the school year should look like, sound like, and feel like than maybe in the last few years.
From Mr. McClure via Mr. Weathers, he wants to know about the status of the grade five arc.
So, it is our plan to expand arc to grade five, and we had budgeted for it, so yes, that is still, still should happen. Mr. McClure.
Ms. McCusick, communicating with parents was so difficult, are we going to get aggressive with a common platform like Parent Square?
We actually already have, I know there's a Parent Square, started to do a pilot. So, we're somewhere between Parent Square and Blackboard Connect, so we're, I know we have to make that jump at some point, but yes, it sounds like people have embraced Parent Square, so that may be the way that, maybe we'll make that jump sooner than later, because it seems like people want to.
Ms. Muscarella, is it okay with parental permission to continue to work with our students, continue to hold Google meets?
So, that's really interesting. I think when the school year ends, your Google meets need to end. I don't want that to sound insensitive, but I, the district won't be monitoring what's happening, and that makes me a little nervous from a professional standpoint, that there would be, you know, Google meets still going on after school ends. Let me think more about that, but I just, the hair on the back of my neck stands up, and I think this could be a liability, and I don't want anybody to be put in that position. So, I don't think it makes sense to continue teaching or meeting with kids after the school year ends, but...
From Ms. Brandt, what is the procedure to request program vetting?
Program vetting in terms of?
I think that's for me.
Oh.
Yeah, it is. For programs that we might find, there was a whole lot of free stuff online, I didn't use very much of it, because I didn't know what we were allowed to as a district. The state website has very little that it says that we're allowed to use.
You are correct, the state website does have very little, and we, as a district, have approved, I would say, an even smaller subset of that. I mean, a lot of that is not just because of the privacy laws, but also trying not to overwhelm our families at home, trying to learn, like, a million different tools. So, at this point, I would say, if there's anything that is like an absolute slam dunk that you really wanna use with your students, please approach your principal, and they can approach me, and I can vet it for privacy compliance.
Thank you.
Raquel, I'm going to assume that that clarified your question also about online YouTube.
Well, is YouTube allowed, though? Is that approved?
YouTube is approved.
Okay, good, thank you. From Ms. Wiley, we've had technical difficulties getting online to work with our students. Will there be any help resolving that if we are still to work online with either training or equipment?
I think the answer to that is yes, we're definitely gonna work on trying to make that something that works better, especially if we're gonna potentially bring another few hundred kids or households online. So, yes, we are aware that we need work in that department, for sure.
Ms. Kelly, I had a student whose family did not want virtual learning, the family did not believe in internet usage for their children, how can we still be sure they are responsible for the work we provide?
Yeah, I'm having a tough time with that very question. I know of a couple of families who have expressed that to me, and I know that maintaining the paper copies of things is a very difficult thing to do. So, I've been trying to think about how to, we can't really force them to be a part of virtual learning and distance learning. So, it's, I understand the question, I'm not sure of the answer, but I've certainly been thinking about it since it's been posed to me.
Lauren, asking about grade five arc, which I think was already answered. Mr. Gagnon, how about mandatory reporting PD?
So, that's actually something that we have to do every year, so that wouldn't change, it'd still be required for 2021. If you're saying that you need it, or that you want more information about it, please send me an email, and I can go from there if there's something specific you're looking for, a specific reason why.
Same thing, I believe Ms. Sharp's question was answered about the PD on technology and tools. Ms. Aponte, regardless of what the year will look like, we will need to connect with parents earlier this year to develop relationships with new students coming to our classrooms. Question, can we continue to use Dojo as a main communication, much more successful and friendly than Parent Square for others? Question, can we eventually set up some formal notice to parents about participation and accountability?
So, the problem is that if we stick with Dojo, then we have Parent Square, Blackboard, and Dojo, and so, we're gonna need to make the jump at some point to just having one district form of communication, and I believe that's going to be Parent Square. So, I wouldn't suggest continuing to use Dojo, because we're gonna be making that jump as a district. So, we'll have to figure that out, because we don't wanna lose people who are comfortable with Dojo without providing them supports to help them understand how to use the new platform.
Ms. Bira, is there the potential for a meeting like this when we have more of an understanding of what next year looks like?
I love that idea, yes, as soon as I get information, we can book another meeting, for sure.
Ms. Leahy, is there PD planned for parents over the summer in terms of technology training?
So, we have talked about potentially offering some virtual PDs, I've talked to Family and Community Engagement about how we might use the Parent University piece in that regard. We haven't gone any further than, I don't think we've gone any further than having those conversations, I know we recognize it's definitely a need, so maybe we can pull the trigger on that soon. I see Mr. Camacho. You're on mute. I was just saying about Parent University and using it as a platform to provide parents with technology PD, so that they're better able to support their kiddos.
I was able to, yeah, absolutely, we're working towards that this year. PCU is gonna be mostly virtual from now on, and we're planning on putting all workshops together to provide parents with support.
So, the teachers who are in the writing in the chat are saying that they would really like to see some of that training come up soon, maybe even before the start of the school year, or at the beginning of the school year, at the very least.
We can work on that.
Yeah, sounds like, I know we're already aware it's an issue. And I think everyone who stayed home this year, or who worked from home this year, I should say, who had kids at home, know that there are struggles that you uncovered that you never imagined you would be trying to, so, it's very real.
From Ms. Brunner, if we wind up opening virtually, is there a chance we could loop with our students from this past year, since we have built a rapport with these students, and they will be more able to learn?
So, that sounds nice from the offset, but it would create a whole series of things, right, all the way across the organization, so I'm gonna say, we're not going to be looping with the kiddos, but I hear what you're saying, that they are disconnected from us, and if we start back virtually, they're again disconnected from us. We're gonna have to figure that out, but I don't think looping is something that we can have everybody do, so, it's a nice thought from the heart, right? It's just that, logistically, I don't think it'll work.
From a staff member through Mr. Weathers, wants to know if the district has any plans to address race issues in the school community at the beginning of the year?
So, I think my whole vision for opening the school year is about developing a real sense of community, and making sure that... um, and, and making sure that everyone understands what it looks like, sounds like, and feels like to function as a member in that community. So, any ways that the community can be divided, which includes race, would be addressed. Um, I do think that we need to have some experts in to really get at the heart of the race issues. I, I know that I'm not one that's been trained or qualified to, to provide that PD, but there are many people who are trained to do that. And some of them are on our staff, which is really nice. Um, but yes, I think that, like I said, any ways that people can be divided, um, need to be addressed when you're trying to truly build a team and a, and a community of learners. So, I think the answer is yes.
Mit- from Ms. Erickson, will online learning be used during snow days to eliminate makeup days at the end of the year?
That's kind of a cool thing, right? Yeah, if we could guarantee that every household actually had access to, uh, technology and that we had a clear plan. I know that, I know, for example, South Windsor got their plan approved and they don't have to make up snow days if the kids actually do the work that's provided, um, when they're, you know, when they go home and schools close. So, it is definitely something we could get, we could get approval from the state to do if we're prepared to do that.
Uh, there is some conversation about translation, um, being offered by ParentSquare and, um, that information is in the chat. Is there anybody who wants to address that question about ParentSquare translation?
It's, it's just a comment about it's gonna be a generic translation and, and you need to review it for nuances.
Okay, thank you.
I've learned to actually run it by my, um, Spanish-speaking colleagues, because a lot of the times the connotations or vocabulary are just off enough where it, it, it's not as friendly as it could be. And some parents have actually requested that we double-check the translations because of those issues. And I use it very frequently.
Good information for the district to have, for sure. Thank you.
Mr. Souza, after this period of distance learning, oops, sorry, do you find ParentSquare is kid-friendly pre-K to second grade?
I don't actually have the answer to that. I certainly could reach out to my pre-K to second grade friends and find out, um, but I don't have the answer to that right now.
It's not, it's only sent to the parents, not to the kids.
It's a communication tool for parents and families. It's not for children. Dojo's for children.
Dojo's not mine for children either.
Uh, well, yeah, when there's a portfolio section, I, I can communicate with the children about their work. I really had a great time with it this summer, this ye- semester.
I was gonna say, I do know, I, I do know that, uh, especially between the fact that we hadn't fully trained our elementary staff for Google Classroom and the fact that it meant more for older grades. Yeah, it may not have been the best, uh, as a team with some of the technology teachers. We've been talking about different ways we might be able to improve that for our younger grades for next year. Uh, so, that is definitely a discussion. Uh, I don't think ParentSquare is the, can be the tool for that. I don't, don't think, though. I'm not sure that Dojo is gonna be the right tool for that either. Uh, we are looking at either additional Google Classroom training or possibly Seesaw. Uh, nothing is definite yet, but it is definitely something we're looking to make easier for our younger students.
Thank you.
And I have, um, a comment from Ms. Reyes, um, how about a bridging session a few weeks before sending them off to the new teacher?
Yeah, actually, um, we actually talked about, uh, some kind of orientation, some kind of process that helped that transition. Um, we're not there yet in terms of our plans. We're still waiting. I think some of it will be impacted by the guidelines we receive. But, we are aware that it's a very unusual end of a year and it could potentially be a very unusual beginning of a year. Um, so, we're gonna do the best we can as a team, um, to, to address the students' needs.
The balance of the comments look to be, um, a, a discussion about those platforms. I assume Mr. O'Neill will be, um, addressing that.
Um, yeah, well, we're gonna follow up on that, um, across the board. Yeah, I can see all the Dojos.
Um, the last one I, uh, Emily Milan, uh, if we end up virtual or hybrid and full, will there be more consistent, clear guidelines given to teachers regarding what virtual learning should look like to ensure consistency for families?
Yes, we actually have already started talking about that, um, developing a manual that sort of goes through the expectations, uh, across the board. It also requires us to provide, um, professional development, because as, uh, Mr. O'Neill said a couple of minutes ago, we didn't actually train the elementary folks, uh, on Google Classroom. We didn't train a lot of the folks on Google Classroom. First of all, because we didn't actually have the kinds of technology, we weren't able to make the purchases that would make that a viable, um, platform for us to use all over the place in the district. So, we know that professional development is a big one. Um, but yes, we are, we, we are definitely thinking about how, how to improve that.
I think that's it. That's the last question.
Alright, anything else? Oh, I saw a couple of things just pop in.
Um, Ms. Westerman, how will we ensure accountability for students and their families during virtual learning?
So, that's what's, that's like the age-old question. Every single district is struggling with that right now. Um, even districts that have, that it's not an issue about having access to technology or access to, you know, to a device or access to the internet. They know that they have a large number of people that are disengaged. It's a very difficult thing. You, it's hard to manage the learning environment in somebody's home. Right? So, it, that, that's a question. Every, every single school system, and I can tell you, I meet, I meet weekly with the local superintendents. We're all struggling with the same thing. It doesn't matter where you come from. There's people who are disengaged and are not feeling the love when it comes to distance learning. And, um, I actually watched it happen with my own son. He's a junior in high school, uh, does really well in school. He just wanted no part of trying to get this work done week after week in this, on this platform. So, I, I've watched it happen from a personal standpoint. Um, it's a, it's a real struggle. I, I don't have the answer. I don't, nobody has the answer right now.
And I, Trace, Dr. Young, where can I jump in?
Absolutely.
So, another component of that is, um, talking about, um, accountability piece. Not only in what engagement is and completion, but we don't know to what level they're getting support at home. Parents helping or in fact doing the work, or a sibling, et cetera. Where that variable is a variable among each of our students. So, when you're trying to measure like, say, an A versus a B, et cetera, it's very challenging, especially in our elementary populations. But, I would say that's true pre-K to 12.
And just looking at, um, Ms. McCusick's, uh, comment, I, some of the school systems have talked about potentially putting in place uh, some kind of parental contract that basically says the things that they're agreeing to help or, or acknowledges what they need support in being able to help. Um, and then the school system works with them carefully. It, again, it's a, it's a big struggle trying to monitor what's happening in uh, thirty-three-hundred individual homes or three-thousand individual homes. But, it's definitely something that I, I hear you loud and clear why it needs to happen.
From Ms. Pipe, how will teacher evaluation look for next year?
So, the teacher evaluation system has not changed for next year. Um, you know, as you know, the, the, uh, Commissioner of Education waived the supervision piece or the teacher evaluation piece of the second part of the year from March on. Um, I don't know what the state guidelines will be, but our evaluation tool here in Wyndham is not being changed.
From Ms. Glenn Long, if we remain online fully or as in hybrid, will we be asked to teach full online classes at set times given students access to technology? This would be problematic, but I know some districts are headed that way.
It is true. Some districts are headed in the direction where they're actually holding, uh, regular classes or shortened versions of regular classes. Um, and the kids will actually check into class, um, as if they would check in in person. So, uh, first, we have to get every household access to a device before we can mandate that. Um, but, I guess it depends again on the guidelines. I need to, I, we need to understand what, what the state is thinking of. I'm gonna assume it's a hybrid model based on our neighbors, but again, until I see that, I, I can't fully answer that question.
Uh, just a comment from Ms. Fin Smith. She wanted to add that anti-bias, anti-racism PD would be helpful for staff at the beginning of the year. Several people concurring with that.
I completely agree. And if you have a connection, I, I think it's one of the, uh, things that people are asking or trying to book all over the place. I'm not sure there's a whole lot of people, but I agree with you. If you have a connection or a particular, um, PD that you think would work for us, I'd send it my way.
Ms. Battle, uh, it, it has been challenging to support young students of parents who were working. Many other families are beginning to return to work. This will impact virtual participation and the abilities of students to support their children. Families, I'm sorry, to support their children.
Completely agree. And I think that's part of the reason why when they started having the conversations about who would be in person and who would be online, the elementary kids would be in person more often. I think that's part of the reason, because you can't get people back to work and you can't help them if the people are back to work. So, I, again, I don't have the answers, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Ms. Mendick, will there be some PD for staff across the board on COVID and precautions before school starts? Especially after we are given specifics from the state.
Right, I, that absolutely has to happen. Um, not only do, will we be putting out uh, a district policy, which is obviously, the district policy is gonna be aligned to what the state is recommending we do in terms of health and safety. Uh, but we absolutely will need to provide PD to every single staff member about what are the, uh, best practices for keeping everyone safe. Um, so, absolutely, there's going to be part of, remember, the first thing we're working on in 2021 is our response to COVID-19.
From Ms. Brunner, with regards to mandated reporting, as this continues, I have seen more children alone, eight or nine years old, and taking care of pre-K siblings. Where do we stand on this? Will the reporting guidelines change?
I haven't heard anything about the reporting guidelines changing. If you see kids that are in danger, you just need to report it. Um, you know, that's completely, that's, if you see it in your, I'm guessing you're seeing it in your neighborhoods, if that's, because that's where you've been. But, yeah, I mean, I have not heard any guideline of any changes in terms of those guidelines. We're still mandated to try to keep kids safe.
Um, I think that's the last of the questions, unless Ms. Greer, did, did you have a particular question regarding engagement?
Actually, it wasn't a question. It was just a comment. Um, what I'm finding is with the littles, if you keep them with you, you get a lot more bang for your buck. So, we had very good experiences getting our children to join our meetings. We had thirty-two out of forty almost every day. Once we release them independently, that's where all the trouble came.
Hey, that's true in, in person too, right? They're good if you keep them real close. I get it. I get it. Um, thank you, Angela. I'm just noticing, so, um, that is true. I for, I, thank you for reminding me, I think it was Amy Fin Smith, that there's a trained team, a diversity team that's already trained in the district. So, we need to get some plans, how to, how to utilize that team. I'm all about using our internal experts. So, absolutely, get me a plan. Alright, it's two-ten. Any other pressing issues? I'll tell you what, if you don't put them in the chat box now, you know you can reach out to me through email. I'm happy to get back to you. Pretty good. I'm pretty good with the email. I won't say I'm perfect, but pretty good. You're very welcome for the forum. I think it's important that we connect everyone. So, we ended up with more than three-hundred people on the call. I feel like I answered some questions, I, but I told you in the beginning that I knew I absolutely did not have the answers to many things. Um, but I promise you, as I get the information, I will make sure that it gets to you. Alright, so the last part is just to wish, uh, for our non-certified staff who are on the call, I wanna wish you all a very happy, uh, and healthy summer vacation. Uh, and for the certified people, I'm gonna wish you a very happy and healthy summer vacation after you finish tomorrow, whatever you got going on with your, with your principals tomorrow. Um, it, it has been quite a journey, uh, like trial by fire over here. But, it's been wonderful, um, to help and, help and get through this. And I don't know about you, but I'm really happy it's over. Really happy.
Happy birthday, Tracy.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that was Angela's voice.
Yes, it was.
I, I know I'm happy about getting to celebrate with Wyndham High School's graduates. That's kind of cool. So, and they brought, they brought cupcakes too. So, you know, who says no to that stuff? So, alright, thank you, everybody. Um, I'll be in touch soon. Have a great summer. And, uh, again, on behalf of the Wyndham Public School students, you guys did awesome. Thank you.